Sure. 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 We're calling to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for Monday, June 19, 2017. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Decanter.
Here.
Mr. Bowles.
Here.
Ms. Sweeney.
Present.
Mr. Hochschild.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Menon.
Here.
Mayor Holiday.
President. Thank you, we have a quorum. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This brings us to our section of public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the school committee, could you please step forward, state your name and your address, and try to keep your comments to about two minutes or less? Is there any public comment at this time? You have your own time, so you don't need to...
[laughing]
Yeah. Hearing none, we're going to move on. Consent agenda, do we have warrants, Mr. Menon?
We do. Warrants three. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $362,038.06 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $190,349.57 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $25,715.85 be approved, the city auditor to make payment, and deduct the funds from the schools' account. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'd like to draw your attention to the Newburyport School Committee business meeting minutes for Monday, June 5, 2017. Could I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Seconds.
Discussion. Corrections? Yes, Mayor.
Could everybody just take a look at the motion that was recorded and seconded, a motion made by Bruce Menon and seconded by Vice Chair Sweeney, on the later school start times? Is that accurate? That... It says to proceed with the 30-minute later start time and 30 minutes later end time for all schools for 2018-19. Each school will have a preliminary report to the school committee on October 16, 2017. Is that correct?
That doesn't capture the spirit of what we discussed.
That's what I thought. Can we modify that a little bit so it...
See, I brought that up. We just discussed this for probably 45 minutes at CIE, so that we would have a clear understanding of what that motion should look like. Of what the motion entails.
I think the problem is that when we say proceed, the process, unless we want to define the process as part of the motion, the process is that there's going to be a report in November and a second vote in December.
October.
Report in October.
Report in October and a second vote in December.
By December, yeah.
Yeah. So...
Maybe it should be like that.
So we could put those two bullet points in there, but when Bruce said to move forward with the process, that was the process he was talking about.
Okay.
That's what he's talking about.
But I think it should be in the minutes that reflects that each school is to set up a committee, and it's not in the motion, and I think that's really important piece of that.
I guess, Mr. Menon, since you made the motion, I'm going to ask you if you could rewrite that section to include the committees at each school. And it does say... It doesn't say the process, it says "to proceed with," so I don't know if that needs some clarification as well. So could you hold off on the minutes, Mrs. Kennedy, until you get that? And, Mr. Menon, could you send that by me?
You know, essentially, the three bullets...
If you have them, fine.
Yeah, no. One is that each school will set up a committee to consider challenges and solutions.
Good. Nice clarity. Are you getting this, or has he given this to you?
Yeah, each school will set up a committee to consider challenges and solutions. We'll keep what's in there about the report. These committees will report on October 16, and there'll be a final vote in December.
Perfect. Thank you.
So those are the three bullets that I would...
Yes.
And I'm certainly willing to accept that being added to the motion.
Yes.
Can I second that motion?
Cheryl.
No, I called it, did I?
Oh, that night I did, yes.
Are you comfortable with the amendments?
Have you written it down?
I haven't written it down.
So do we need to vote on the minutes again, the amended minutes?
Yes.
Is there anything else in the minutes that anyone would like to comment on, take a look at? All right, could I hear a motion for the new amended minutes?
So moved.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
Any conversation, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Motion carries.
Who made the... I was listening to Bruce. Who made the motion?
Mr. Menon and Ms. Sweeney.
Made the original motion.
Same.
It's clear to me.
I made the motion again. It was the same people.
All right.
All right, seconded again. Bruce made it twice.
So those are the three bullets. Mrs. Kennedy, those three bullets get added to the motion that exists.
Who approved the amendments?
We approved the minutes. Who... That was... Who moved that? That was Bruce again?
I moved to approve the minutes, yes.
Okay. One more second.
Our student rep isn't here this evening. I don't think he graduated, but isn't he doing ultimate frisbee as a sport, so maybe that's what he's doing. Next on our agenda is our representative. We need to vote in a new representative for the Whittier Vocate School Committee, and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Bacarol.
Thank you. Let me just remind everyone and give you a little history. I had voted... I sent out an email. We were really looking for candidates, and we were having difficulty filling the positions. So I sent out letters to parents of all the students at who are currently attending Whittier. We did a number of things, reaching out to try to draw out some interest, and we had three responses. Joe Spalding, who is here tonight, Ben Fischera, who is in Paris as we speak, and will not be back until the end of the week, and Cindy...
We can interview him there.
Cindy Wilkinson called me today to say that some things have changed for her at work, and that she's going to be having to do some additional training at work, and at this time she felt she could not commit. So we have Joe here tonight, and I will turn it back over to the school.
Come on up and join us. Get used to having a seat on the board.
Give me the chance, I think I've got it. We can work on that.
Mr. Spalding, can you start out by... We have a brief... Your letter here, we didn't get any other information. So would you want to start out just by telling a little bit about yourself and what brought you here? Oh, we have that.
You've got it, yeah. Okay.
I've been president of Newburyport for 63 years and four days as of last Thursday. I'm involved with church groups in the city. City government as a city councilor for eight years. I'm on a retirement board now, but on there for six years, chairman for two years. I worked post office for 19 years. Been involved with numerous groups, church groups, and different things. And actually, I'm on the student council at Whittier. That's what they called me and asked me if I wanted to be on that, and I said, "Yeah." I tried it out for like eight months, and I made every single meeting, and I got involved with them, and felt comfortable, and they're well-liked up there, as far as I know. They actually called me about four weeks ago, said there was an opening on the board, and it's been a few months, whatever it was, and they'd like to have me on the board representing Newburyport. So we'll try it out, see what happens, and go from there.
What interests you about Whittier itself?
My impression is that not everybody goes to high school, including myself, within, you know, with a chance of going to college after our interest in college. So if you go to Whittier, at least you can come out of there with a trade, you know, at least, you know, start you out. And I think that's... People are very dedicated. I've learned that over the last eight months. They're very dedicated to the students and to the faculty and everybody else. It seems like a real good group there, and they've got some building issues coming up. They're going to be looking for rehab in the whole building over up there, the building. So I actually have been on a couple of committees. I did the police station down in Newburyport, when they did the police station over. After the Greek church burnt, I was on the committee to rebuild the church, so I've got a little bit of experience, and I get...
I can say.
Couple of... So been different... Like, it's different groups. It was on the... 911 came into Newburyport, they were going to just do the basic 911, so I pushed it up to do enhanced 911, you know, improvements like that. So I get along... I mean, I try to get along with everybody. I don't make up my mind till I hate both sides of any issues, and if somebody's got a better opinion to something, I'll be glad to vote with them and change my mind if I do make an opinion, so...
Anyone else, please? Bruce?
Joe, things are significantly dramatically improved in terms of our relationship with Whittier, but they were not very good for a number of years. One of the expectations, I think, for our person who serves on the Whittier Board is that they're going to advocate for Newburyport students, for the school to continue to accept Newburyport students, and continue to expand its offerings, both to all students and Newburyport students. I just wanted to hear you talk a little bit about advocating for our students at the school.
I'm on it to the emails and computers. I do what we're doing right now. My best thing is I talk face-to-face. I don't like to talk on the phone. I don't like to... So I don't have a problem with going with anybody, speaking with Whittier parents, or parents of Newburyport, or any school committee, meeting face-to-face, any place, any time. I don't know. That's one of my, I think, good things on my side. I like to do, like, all face-to-face with people. So I'm talking to you, you know, like this. This is... And I know there's this... If the students want to get in, we try hard to get them in. It's 47 now, I believe, and anything we could do, I could do, working with the group. Otherwise, that's the best thing, we work together, like you said. There's no fighting back and forth, we're not going to get nothing done. And so I'm not saying I agree with everything, but I try to keep open-minded and do like the best I can do, you know, different circumstances and...
Yeah, like I said, things have really significantly dramatically improved from the time that I've been here.
Okay. That's good.
But we still want to make sure that the school is taking our kids, so...
Mayor, did you have a question?
Joe, I was wondering if you could talk about it, especially since you've been on the school council there for a while. Could you talk about what you see as the greatest challenges for Whittier at this point?
The building itself is 40 years old, 50 years old. I think right there, that's a big issue. They don't... They're telling me that the cheerleaders can't go into no place when they do their practicing, so they're in the hallway while the classes are going on, different things. Just I think the student population is expanding so much, there's just not enough room. We've learned around Newburyport, the high schools are expanding like that. I've actually worked on a couple of things already, where outreach programs, where businesses will sponsor classes in Whittier, like it was in Certified Nursing, where they would bring in people, and the kids would come in and, you know, and work, do classes, and then after the classes, they would go up and work in certain nursing homes, or, you know, different things, learn a profession at the same time. So I mean, that's going to be expanded a little bit up there. I think there's two or three different groups up there to do that, but the more, you know, the better off you get with the business community and, you know, schools together. I think it's a great thing. I think anything else seems to be all right from what I can see in the eight months I've been up there, but we only meet once a month for an hour, so it's going to take a while to really find out what's going on up there. And I feel comfortable there, and I feel welcome, and they were very, you know, very happy to have me there, so I think...
Mr. Hochschild?
Hochschild?
Take a breath.
I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry, just take a breath. I guess first, just, you know, thank you for showing up and being willing to be considered for this, but second of all, I really have a question, so much as this statement that I'm wondering if you haven't thought about, and that's the increasingly competitive nature of getting into the Massachusetts tech schools, and how the students you spoke about, who may not be on a college track, are actually getting edged out. Someone came last year and did a presentation to us about adding advanced placement courses, for example, at the tech schools, so that more kids who are likely to take advanced placement classes would go there, whereas I'm thinking those kids are doing pretty well here, whereas the tech schools could fill a void for someone who's got, say, attendance problems here because they're not as motivated to go to a traditional school, or interested in the curriculum here. So I'm trying to figure out how we ensure there's space for those kids who really need something different?
It seems to me now, like it says, the acts of work in the building up there, it's just, it's really tight up there, and I think they're holding back on enrollment because of the space situation. I mean, it's tough to, you know, going at so much room up there. So eventually, when they're expansion for, I guess they've got, they're pretty well set up on some plans, and they've actually been working with the state board to get, you know, funding and architectural funding and stuff. So I think once they get that space, I think you'll see, you know, enrollment go up more.
I'm just trying to figure out how, as things become more competitive, we help the kids who aren't competitive get into the programs they need. Because kids with attendance issues, behavior issues, low grades, aren't competitive, so when they apply to these schools, they're not getting in.
I've seen... What I've seen up there is hands-on from this principal I know up there, I know the business manager, and I met the superintendent a few months back, and even the staff, when we have their meetings up there, the teachers, you know, one group, one person represent a bunch of groups, and each classroom is representing these freshmen up to the senior, and they, you know, what they're doing to improve, they always... That's what their meeting is about, basically, safety issues, you know, what do you feel safe with? Do you feel, you know, what programs would you like to see that you don't see? Other things, they just try to get everybody involved. So I think if they can do that, and they seem to be pretty well on top of any disciplinary issues or anything like that. They have a police officer, I think, most of the time, that keeps an eye on things, kind of, and he works with the students, he's out and about, he's not there to look for trouble, he's there to help them out. And I, like I said, spent a few hours with the principal up there, and he's really a hands-on type, so if they come in with a problem, I think these people can really cover it up there and get them, get them back, you know, in front of... Do the best they can to keep them in line.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, Mr. Decanter?
Sure, just a short one, Joe. Obviously, you feel very comfortable talking to groups of people, so...
Not really. I'm a good fucking...
So if you were sitting in a room full of eighth graders, what would you tell them about Whittier? Why would you suggest they even consider...
My thing would be, like I said in the beginning, not kind of early eighth grade, but I mean, if they decide before that, they might make up their mind before that. I think if you, you know, what do you plan? What are you seeing for yourself, for your future? You think you're definitely going to go, you know, to the college programs, you're going to go to college? If not, you know, maybe somebody's parents are electricians or plumbers or anything like that, and they want to get into a trade like that, I would say, you know, that would be, you know, try it out, and if you don't like it, you could always change. So like I said, you know, the faculty, everybody else will welcome these new students in, and they try to make them feel welcome there.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Mr. Decanter?
Yes.
Anyone else? Mr. Spalding, as you know, we do have another candidate that we would like to take into consideration, so thank you so much for your time this evening, and we'll get back to you as soon as we possibly can.
Thank you for every bit of time. Hope everyone will be on this board, I know it's tough.
Do you have any questions for us? No.
I'm pleased. No. I'll let you go. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Anything else, sorry.
Thanks so much. I would like, with your permissions, school committee members, to move item number eight up to the next item, so that we can hear from Ms. Lysick and let her go home. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
Could we do that? Thank you. I'm thinking about your health and welfare.
Oh, thank you. I don't think she'll object to that.
No, I didn't think she would.
Oh.
And I didn't think any of my esteemed colleagues would either. Good evening, Mrs. Lysick.
Good evening.
Can you just give us a tiny bit of background about why you're here tonight, and that we didn't have a finance committee this month, and so this is new to us as well?
Certainly. Generally, in the month of June, I'll go with the finance subcommittee, our anticipated end-of-year financials. This month, we didn't have... We're not having a meeting because it falls on eighth-grade graduations, so Cheryl had asked at the last meeting if I would update the committee as a whole, rather than just doing, waiting for the subcommittee to meet. So that's what this is. It's a summary, it's very much a projection, because we still have the month of June, the rest of June to get through, plus salaries for July and August, so it will be a while before we close out the year. But this will give you an idea of where we anticipate falling. And on the first sheet is the LEA, the general fund, and choice. And you can see the current balance, and then the projected expenses and salaries are items that aren't encumbered. We still, we have all of the teachers' payroll encumbered, but the clerks and custodians, cafeteria, that payroll's not encumbered, so that's what those are. You can see the estimated savings is $799,929,000. $345,000 of that is due to the student that we had spoken about earlier in the year that was moving into Newburyport. We have had budgeted for her, but we've lost the revenue in choice for her, because we had, that was also budgeted as a revenue. But the other school district that she's coming from, because she moved after the budget was set, they're responsible for her for this year. So it's kind of a wash. We lose the revenue, but we gain it in expenses. That's why that's so high. We had frozen the budget earlier in the year to try to anticipate savings that we could be using for the next year, FY18. The hope was to save $400,000, but looking at close to $450,000 that we'll be able to save, if everything stays on track. In choice, our fund balance carryover was $958,798. Anticipated revenue was $546,341, but due to that student, we're down to $196,447. I expect to spend about $240,000 out of that, leaving us with an end-of-year balance in choice of $914,454. Now, again, that can change. Out of that $900,000, we've budgeted $618,000 in FY18, which is going to leave us with under $300,000, and if this all comes to true projection, that's not going to leave us any money for FY19. You can't go down to nothing in choice, because we're not feeding into it any longer. So that is the only fund we have that we could draw from in an emergency situation. So with under $300,000 into it, my recommendation would be that you don't use that money to fund the budget any further. So we have $94,000 coming in this year for choice, and another $600,000 budgeted from the fund balance, that's $700,000 that we could lose in FY19, not have to fund the budget. So just a little heads up on that. On the next page is where we stand on our revolving funds. Circuit breaker. Generally, with circuit breaker, what you do is the money you get in this year is what you spend next year. So our fund balance was $449,601. We've expended out of that $466,072. Our projected revenue for this year, which the last payment could vary, is $654. So the end-of-year balance in that fund would be $638,109, and we budgeted for next year $641,505. So you can see there's a small shortfall of $3,395. That's, I don't anticipate that being a problem. We can, we'll absorb that in the LEA. School lunch. Now, we had budgeted $30,000 for contingency. As you can see here, we actually had to transfer $42,000. And the reason for that is that they had unexpected repairs, that they could not absorb in their budget of just over $15,000, so we've had to pick up that expense. With the money Chartwells will have to give us, if they run into a shortfall in any given year, they have to give us $15,000. So with that, we should be able to start next year with $9,000 in, as a fund balance. We've budgeted $20,000 for next year to have a contingency in food services. We don't have any retirement, so there's no sick leave buybacks. I don't know any equipment that's going to fall apart, but, you know, you never know. Transportation is right on target.
Can I just stop you for one second on school lunch? So we budgeted 30, we wound up paying 42, and we're talking about budgeting 20 next year?
Which I'm a little concerned with.
Okay. I just wanted to...
Yeah.
Okay. Are we anticipating any changes in the school lunch program for next year? Loosening up the regs, or...
I do think they are going to loosen up a little bit. Susan and I are going to meet with Chartwells over the summer, probably, maybe August, to talk to them and see what they're doing to bring in the modified regulations and what food they're going to try to offer, things like that. We'll also be meeting with the new director for our schools as well, with Chartwells. So hopefully, I mean, they've been very... They look ahead. They tried a plan, they've tried to improve the program, so I'm hoping that with this next round of loosening up a little bit with the regulations, that maybe we can not break even, but...
And what did we allocate last year?
30.
The year before?
The year before was 50.
Okay, so we've tried to go down in our allocations, and I don't know if you want to talk about that at all, Mr. Paul, but...
Well, no, I just, the only question I had was relative to participation, if you have any sense of how that's going.
I don't have the figures yet, but Sharon will give me an end-of-year report.
Okay, I think that'd be helpful.
That I can forward to the school committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, please.
And I think the more we can, I think the more we can do to promote, you know, the food service and the healthy options that are offered, if you will, at each school site, the better, because I think that's going to help, you know, get kids and families invested into the program, and not that it's not good for families to prepare lunches so their kids can bring them to school, but, you know, they may, the children may be missing out on some good options, and I think that doing things like that, and also trying to promote the food service to provide for different events that are held, you know, on campus, helps too. So I'd just like to see, and I know Chartwells is interested in promoting that too, so I know that every fall or every late summer, they try to put together something for the fall, and probably a good time for everyone to put their heads together and, you know, find some good actionable plans.
And are we proceeding with the breakfast program for next year?
At Brestaham, we're going to pilot it.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that five days a week?
To my knowledge, yes, that's the plan.
And the cost?
I don't know that.
Okay. Okay. So could you come back later on, maybe in August? You'll have more information about that.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Transportation, what has come in is going to be going out. I don't have the figures for the FY18 enrollment yet. We still have until the 21st for online payments. We have ended our in-house registration. So sometime next week, I should be able to also forward your report on where we stand for next year's enrollment.
And when is the contract for that up?
We have one more year for Chartwells, and the busing will be up at the same time.
So the 2018, 2019 school year for both of those?
Mm-hmm. Kindergarten full day has a healthy balance. It has for a number of years. Kindergarten full day can only be spent on kindergarten full day salaries, but it can be spent on supplies and materials as well. So next year, we will start using some of that fund balance for the supplies and materials of that department. They carried over $217,827. Their revenue is $366,783, and their expenditures is right up there, 366,326, pretty much what they took in. They'll end the year with about $218,000 remaining in the balance.
Again, I'm so sorry.
No, ask questions.
Did we, do we have an additional full-day kindergarten class now?
For next year?
For next year? Or did we stay the same with that and the, and the distribution of part-time?
It was preschool.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
Preschool had a carryover balance of $119,850. Their revenue projection is $229,495. They've expended $305,839. We've used that to the maximum capacity this year in order to save some money for next year. That was part of our savings. That'll leave a balance of $43,506. School building maintenance, they had a carryover balance of $88,45. Their revenue for this year is $91,741. That includes use of facilities. And their expenditures are $127,403. They should have a balance of about $52,382 at the end of this year. Now their, summer help comes out of that as well. And that's budgeted at $25,000. So that will come out of that over the summer, so that'll bring that balance down.
Out of the $52,000.
I'd like to see that balance be a little higher. Athletics.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Bruce.
It's okay. Just, I hate to jump back to the preschool balance, but there's a $75,000 difference in, between the expenditure and revenue that we had. Can you talk a little bit about that? Did we anticipate?
We, when we were trying to freeze the budget and trying to save $400,000 for next year's use, one of the ways that we anticipated saving that was to take more preschool salaries that then were budgeted out of preschool revolving.
Okay.
Because we had the balance.
Okay.
To use that up, put a little bit more in LEA and save that.
Okay.
So as long as we have, you know, at least $50,000 balance, then I think that we'd be fine in those accounts. And it's pretty close to that. Athletics had a balance of $55,000. Their projected revenue, they budgeted $275,000, but their projected revenue was higher than that. It's $300,923. But their expenditures are also higher. And this is a very rough estimate here, because right now, they're putting in for their second half of coaching salaries. And I don't have that figure right now. I put it in here at $100,000, but that could vary. So their end-of-year balance should be about $38,889, so...
And does this include the middle school athletics as well?
Yes, anything that would go in athletic revolving would be projected here.
Anybody have any questions? So what is the state of the state, in your opinion?
I think it's good to going into FY18, we're in right where we want to be. Kindergarten revolving is a little higher. I think that we can start spending that down. The other revolving, I wouldn't go any lower than what they're at now. You'd want them hovering around $50,000. You want them under 100, but you basically want like a teacher's salary in there, so that if something happened and you had to hire somebody or pay somebody. School building maintenance, I think, is a little low. I'd like to see that be a little higher, only because this building is old. Things happen. We had unexpected costs, as you can see, with over $120,000 came out of that this year. So, and we don't have a lot of revenue going in there. So I would like to see a little less coming out of that, maybe take it from the LEA if we could. But circuit breaker is always going to be pretty zeroed out, because you're budgeting what you collect the following, the previous year, so...
The other thing that I just want to add to is that, which makes me a little bit nervous, is just that with an anticipating state and federal potential cuts, that I think we need to just keep that in the back of our minds as we're thinking about, because that really could impact, you know, not only Title I, but even circuit breaker makes me a little bit, a little nervous. And I think that just even some of the proposals that have been floated out there from the feds at this point are really frightening. So I just think we need to, we need to just keep that in the back of our mind.
And this year is the first time that I've actually budgeted a little higher at circuit breaker. They reimburse us at circuit breaker about 70%. I usually budget at 50, because you never know if they're going to cut it. And this year, we went up about 10%. So it'll be a little tight if they hit that account. But if they hit it, that means that it's less for FY19. FY18 is solid with what we have. I don't see any concerns for FY18. I think with choice being what it is, we're okay with the $618,000 that we budgeted. I think our revolving funds are, while they're not holding any excessive amounts of money, there'll be enough to get us through the coming year. So my concern would be the...
Thank you.
...year moving forward beyond that. But I don't want to get there yet.
Well, just a couple of things. I think as a member of the executive board at MMA, last week, we met with finance and we met with lieutenant governor at the state house. And I think we are very fortunate to have an administration that comes out of municipal government. And they really understand that we are still working to get up to like '07 levels in terms of, you know, particularly, there were a lot of mayors and managers that talked about how difficult this budget was for all of us in terms of, you know, as you know, we started with a negative 6.2% in local aid. And so I don't, we walked away feeling very comfortable that we are going to be okay. This isn't where they're going to cut. They're not going to cut local aid. That's, you know, sort of where we felt as we left in terms of the dialogue, but, you know, it depends, I mean, things can change. So, but at least we're working very hard to advocate on that level, you know, and being able to be at the table, you know, with everyone sharing the same concerns. People from, you know, mass school committee were there, again, sharing the same concerns with the lieutenant governor. So, and even if they use just all the gambling and lottery money, that still covers, you know, our unrestricted government aid line item, which includes chapter 70. So we should still be okay, because that's not money coming out of, you know, another revenue stream at this point. You know, what happens on a federal level in terms of some of our federal funded programs is a different story, but, you know, we'll sort of have to keep our ear open for that one. The only other thing that I wanted to bring up was, I think I recall seeing an email from you, Susan, about the high use of substitutes and long-term substitutes and number of people on, you know, either injury or maternity leaves and things like that. Do we see a change in that next year? This year was an anomaly, I hope?
It was an anomaly. We had, I think, 37?
37 or 38 leaves of absence in this year.
It's the highest number that we've had since I've been here in four years. And I do think it was a very unusual year, and we certainly are not anticipating that next year. So that, that was a, was a huge concern.
Were they medical leaves?
Yeah, for the most part.
It was maternity and...
Well, that I couldn't include medical. I didn't know if anybody was doing a field of study.
No. Nope. No sabbaticals. And, you know, a lot of these teachers, especially the ones out on medical, you know, they have ample sick time to carry them through, so you're paying the sick time as well as $250 a day for a substitute, so...
It's expensive.
For the long term.
Long term, yeah.
I was going to say, I'll go sub for you guys for $250 a day.
Substitute rate next year will be $80. We pay 75 this year, and next year will be 80. We want to stay more in line. Because they changed the minimum wage, you know, our substitutes, you know, spend extra time. Yeah, they really do. And I think that, you know, Susan and I talked about it, we decided that it's not a big increase, but, you know, it's something.
Some keeping with just our surrounding districts.
Aren't any planned leaves of absence yet for next year?
None that are paid yet, no.
Okay.
May I ask one last question? Where, where are we with the high school roof?
We didn't get funded?
I know that. That's why I'm asking. I guess I'm asking...
So what we...
I didn't want to ask, because...
No, it's not, it's not. We met, Superintendent Steve Borcom and I met, and we talked about the middle school parking lot and lighting, which is going forward. It has to have another vote by the council. But, but we decided that with about 20 grand, we can, which is also in a request for transfer from the city council as a capital expense, we can do some repairs and patching and reapply next year.
Okay. And that'll be sufficient?
Yes. I mean, how could we not trust Steve Borcom when he tells us that?
Oh, no, I just didn't...
No, I know, I know.
You know, we haven't had a conversation. I know we had some water problems and electrical problems. I just...
What the state did was they changed the criteria a little bit, because they had so many people applying this year, that they changed it. They were only looking at projects that were 30 years old and not 20 years old.
I read that.
So that's the reason that, that's the reason that we were sort of kicked out of that, that pool. But we can reapply next year.
Are we 30 years old next year?
No.
Didn't think so.
I have one more question.
Kristy.
I don't even know if you can answer this, but I'm just, I'm curious about, you know, how we've, we've expensed this student that's moving into District out of choice this year. Is that going to be a lo, like a long-term expense that's going to be coming out of the budget every year subsequently, since we can't draw out of choice anymore? I don't, I don't know if you can...
It's not going to be long-term, but I don't know how long.
Yeah.
I'd have to look at the records. I'm not sure how many years.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for answering.
Come and do something good, please. You owe me.
Okay, I do.
Oh, Mr. Decanter. Section J.
Thank you for that.
The reason I said it, please, the, the policy committee has worked long...
Incredible.
...and hard and diligently this year, meeting on Saturday mornings from whatever to whatever. And the work that's coming out of this committee is phenomenal.
It's the Saturday morning breakfast club. So last meeting, we presented to you Section J, and then a couple of other policies from the instruction and curriculum section, which is Section I, that are required for our review. We also received the, we also received from Mr. Testa, a couple of modifications that he wanted to do to student discipline in their handbook. One around smoking, vaping, et cetera, and one about parking on school grounds. Basically, the rest of everything he's got in the student manual is in line with our policies. He's got stuff in the manual that we do not include in our policies, but we're fine with. And so that is point seven on the agenda, is one that we can take care of also as a second reading and take care of tonight.
Do you know if he amended, I mean, I had some questions about one of the sections that he presented to us last...
He sent me an addition, an amendment to that.
Okay, it was more the process of what happens if...
Notification.
Right, yeah.
It's in there.
Okay.
So today, finally, I was able to send around a redlined version of the document. I did not print up copies, because I figure I'd be somewhat ecologically sane. But there were a lot of changes. I want to thank, you know, Steve and Christine for spending yet another Saturday morning, last Saturday with us to crank through it. I want to say, thank Dave and Donna for really diving deep into the section and coming up with all sorts of questions and thought processes. I changed most of the wording that you requested. There are a couple of things that I clarified. For example, I think we did last Saturday, and you also, both Dave and Donna caught the fact that we had the school councils actually writing the handbook...
The approval process.
Policies. And they do. We approve the high school, the high school handbook by law, but the others we don't need to approve. So the other, the others are written and approved at the school council level. And then we do, we review the, the high school handbook. So that we have done. We have not gone down to the middle school and the elementary schools to come up with. The only thing that I will say is that, and this makes a lot of sense to us, and we're very happy to hear, is that the Bresnahan and the Mullen share a policy, a student handbook.
Good, that's good.
So it's consistent all the way through.
And that was new this year?
Great.
They did that work this year.
So with that, let me go through quickly, and I'm not going to go through all of the changes that we did, maybe, because a lot of them were little nits here and there. There were a couple of questions which, let me bring them up, and I will talk to, that were sent to us as well. So Donna, you asked about whether parents were notified, whether we were just going to go on two calls, and whether there was anything documented. They're all duly documented.
Okay, thank you.
So anytime we have disciplinary contact with parents, it is documented.
That's very important.
That was already in the policy.
Yeah, I just, it wasn't clarified. I just needed that. Thank you.
Yes, laser pointers are still potentially a problem in our schools. I've got a feeling that if they're used properly, nobody is going to say anything about them. But if they do become a disciplinary issue, or they become, if they're used inappropriately, we want to have the ability to be able to pick them up and put them in the school office for the day.
Understood.
We went through and actually cut out, I counted them, 10 sections on Saturday morning of the student disciplinary sec...
I noticed that.
So we, we just found that there was a lot of repetition, a lot of things that were specific to the high school. So we went and we cut all of that, and we renumbered that, that particular portion of it. Thank you for the catch on the wrong reference to MOU. I corrected that. It's Section 3A, not 6A or whatever it was.
6-4.
6-4. We, that was a good rap, but... On dress code, Dave Hochheiser asked if all hats were included, and Donna was asking how it is that clothing might not be destructive to school property.
I still have that question. I still, I still, that we require dress that is non-destructive to school property. Is that because they wear like spikes and chains?
It could potentially be. It could be something that catches on, on the back of a school chair in the library. A point that you made yourself, when you said, do we have the proper crust to go to cross the track, so that people don't damage the track? If they're wearing the wrong kind of shoes on that track, they're not into the, into the school policy.
I just couldn't bring up what a non-destructive clothes was.
For example, high heels on our field.
On our turf field, yes, okay. Or chewing, oh, no, that would be action, not wearing.
But that's...
Even on our gym floors.
Yes, okay.
Our, our policies are written very broadly.
None of the guys have heels on the graduation?
So that they cover as much as possible.
Wedges.
Wedges only.
Interesting. Our policies, advice from our, from our council, and I think it's a good policy, are written as broadly as possible, so that we give our administrators as much critical thinking and, and ability to apply common sense as possible. And so some of these may seem a little, and I think some of the con... And so, some of these may seem a little, and I think some of the comments that you asked, Dave, sort of fall into that category. You were looking for some specific examples of some things on how students can affect policy, for example. Well, they probably do a fair amount. For example, at the high school student council in formulating the handbook, they do when students come in here and present to us, and they sway our decision or move our decision one way or another. I didn't want to get into listing specific examples there because those will be very limiting in nature, and I'm not sure that we want to put that kind of limiters on our policy. But, yes, and we want to see more of it. And we don't know where they're gonna come from with the students. We don't know where their ideas are gonna come from. So, this is one of the reasons I wouldn't necessarily advocate making the change there. Donna, you asked about bus drivers, if they are corrie and sorry. Yes, and that is covered in, we have a whole nother transportation policy that, how the district deals with transportation as general. These were specific student behaviors on the bus was what that policy was on.
It just jumped in my head when I was reading that. Can I just ask a question about that? So, is that on our dime or Salter's or whoever is the transportation contractor, and then they give us the list of everyone who's been corried?
They, that's their requirement that they have before they hire anyone. They have a very rigid safety process that they go through.
And that's part of our contract process?
That's part of our contract, yes.
Okay, just wanted to double check.
Use of vans or private automobiles for trips plan to include late night. And I think what we came to the conclusion is that the word "private" was out of place. It's private vans or automobiles is what is prohibited because we have allowed for overnight trips, the use of the school van driven by a school employee who's qualified to do so with the appropriate riders and all of that good stuff. Then, the last comments Donna, that you had were, would like to see us look into offering credit for academic extracurricular activities. I agree. That's coming up in our next section. Section I, something for you to look forward to. It's a teaser.
Wait a minute, we're going backwards. We're on J.
I hopped around. Now, we're creative. Give us that one, Cheryl.
I will. I'll give you whatever.
So, unless people have other questions or thoughts that you would like me to clear up on what is in this tome, I also sent you a clean copy. So, if you didn't feel like reading around all of the squiggles and decanter deleted here, deleted here, deleted here, occasionally I added a comma. And incidentally, just for the record, the typos that you caught, all of them were in information that we cut and pasted from the state.
Set one.
Set one. Cheryl just found another one.
I called him.
You did, yeah.
Spelled punishment.
I spelled punishment wrong. That's my punishment. My punishment is having to deal with this stuff. What are you talking about? Okay, so...
Motion to approve the second reading of Policy J.
Second.
Discussion?
Does this include this new section in red about absence reporting?
That was listed in there, and I, for some, I neglected to put it in, so I added it in on this one. If you have questions, I'll be glad to separate it. If you don't, we'll quit.
I thought it was great. It was a nice addition.
Just a quick question. So, seven, says seven days in a semester that we can start. Is that just the high school? Is that like middle school as well?
That's everybody.
School districts, everybody? So, is it, I guess my only problem on those things is I always find it more interesting when it's incumbent upon the teacher to have a class where students not passing if they're missing that many days. So, for example, if you have 20 days out of a class, and you're saying, "Well, I'm just gonna deny your credit because you missed 20 days," but the student is still passing the class, I don't love policies like that. Do you guys follow me?
Yes.
So, my problem with this is denying credit based on seat time versus we should be having class experiences that students are gonna struggle to pass if they're...
Isn't the word that they can be denied?
Yeah, it says they can.
It's not that they will be denied a classroom grade.
The student, the principal may take necessary action.
It's a credit review process, too.
Again, we're trying to have the teeth in there that we need to enforce these things when we... Well, that was the other question you had, which I do want to bring up. You asked about pulling people out of graduation as a potential penalty or consequence, whether that was something. And we did discuss that. We discussed it at fairly great length, given recent occurrences, and pretty much agreed that we felt the policy as it was written was correct. When you get to that period of senior week, there's woefully little that you can hold out as a consequence, and there are a whole series of high-risk events that happen during that period. And so, giving the principal, again, tools doesn't mean they're gonna use them, but the tools to enforce something, something that we strongly believe we should continue.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Congratulations to the policy committee.
Thank you, everybody.
Nice work. Well done.
Do we need to take separate votes? We probably do need to take a separate vote on Section IC, which is a school year, school calendar. There were no changes made to that policy. So, I would move that we approve the second reading of Policy IC, school year, and calendar. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Same for, I move the approval of Policy IHBA, which is English Language Learners, which is presented to you for second reading. No changes were requested on this policy. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Should I keep going on? I'm on a roll. I'm gonna keep going.
Okay.
I move approval of the Newburyport High School Handbook with the additions that Mr. Testa gave us on parking and smoking, vaping, et cetera.
Second. See, I didn't see that update after we requested he change the language.
The change language is in the policy manual.
Okay.
We put it in there.
It's there. Okay, thank you. Was there a second? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Discussion? All those in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a roll. You're gonna keep going?
Could you just explain, was NHS due hand? Was that?
Yes.
Item seven?
Item seven.
Okay, all right.
Approved unanimously.
All right, now, just wondering.
Roll in the line.
Are you all set?
Let me get back over to the next section then. I sent you this afternoon, and I'm sorry for its lateness, but we were trying to get everybody's comments and scores compiled. The superintendent's evaluation, what...
That wasn't next on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
It's fine by me if you do, but...
No, I'm sorry.
It's the strategic plan review is next.
Then I'll shut up.
You can take a rest, and then we'll get back.
I thought you asked me if I wanted to continue.
Well, I, you know.
That's fine.
And as you know, we requested that Susan and Angela give us an update on the strategic plan for this year. So, that's what we're gonna hear next, I hope.
You are.
Good.
Okay. I am happy to report that we have finally received. We had a printing problem, but that has been rectified. So, I am gonna pass these out, and Mayor, I have an entire stack for you to bring to City Hall right here.
All right, wonderful.
And if anyone would like more of these, I am happy to provide you with additional copies.
I'll put each, one in each of the city councilors' boxes, too.
Great, that would be great.
So, take care of it.
Have the teachers received these?
Not yet.
When will they? Before they leave?
They will get them. Hopefully this week. Hopefully, they'll be in everybody's mailboxes this week before they go home. Yeah, we do have a professional development day on Thursday, so, and we have everybody involved in that.
Good.
Thank you. Okay, so...
I love the cardstock. It's more durable than your last one.
Well, I think many thanks to Minuteman Press for...
Yes.
Being so accommodating and redoing them.
Looks really good.
All right, I have to find the right copy that has my notes on it.
Okay, while you're doing that, I'll just say that the CIE committee met this evening, and one of the things that the committee is gonna begin to tackle is communication around the strategic plan. I think we all mentioned that this isn't a standalone document. It's, there's a lot of information around, in and around it. So, we'll be tackling that in the coming year as well. And I think we'll hear more about that in your goals.
We were going to hear more about that. I have additional copies of the strategic plan that some minor editing changes have occurred. So, if people would like one of those, I have additional copies if you would like, if you would like to receive one.
Could you give us a thought of a change? I mean, is it...
It's, it was editing.
Okay, so you, okay.
A word change.
Is it possible to get it electronically?
Yes, absolutely.
I don't want that hard copy. Do you? Just give it to Christine, if she does.
Okay, so, one of the things that we thought...
Good morning.
Oh, we, yeah, plenty.
Great, I'll take one.
There's plenty.
No, sorry.
I would still want one electronically, though.
Yeah, I would actually like...
I'm gonna have, I'll have...
I think that's good.
I'll have it sent out. Some people, you know, it's sort of like newspapers. Some people like the hard copy. Some people like to read it online. It's the same, you know. We're accommodating.
Depends on your eyes.
We'll send it both ways. So, what we thought we would do tonight is just to do a brief, sort of our focus area for this year, what our primary focus, the progress that we made in those areas. And then we have outlined our plans for over the five-year process, and then our focus areas for next year is what we're going to be presenting to you. Angela and I are gonna tag team a little bit. So, we're gonna go back and forth. So, primary focus this year in terms of reimagining teaching and learning, I'm just, I'm gonna walk through this document, this smaller document, if you wanna start with that. And, you know, all students' holistic and academic needs were met through teaching, curriculum, and assessment methods, where our secondary focus and connected plans that were, that were there. So, what I want to point out to you in your documents and in the plan itself, so Strategy One, Plan Two is here, but the details of Plan Two, you're gonna find in your bigger document, okay? So, you have to, you have to sort of go through the process in order to get some of the details. So, this document is meant to be a brief version of, here are the big, big things that we're doing in the district. That's what this version is meant to be. This is to give you a summary of the work that we have done this year and our plans for next year. And then you have a copy of the entire document where you can look at all of the plans that are in there. So, I just want you to make sure that you have that.
And if I can add, one of the things that Susan, Lisa Furlong, and I have done is when you see these secondary focus areas, when we chose the overarching areas for this year, we went through and actually read the actions within all of the rest of the plan and said, "Which actions make the most sense to support this goal?" And so, that's why you see these secondary areas underneath, and when you read them, you'll see how nicely they're connected. And when we made the decisions around choosing, reimagining teaching and learning, and supporting the needs of all learners, I think was our, the overarching, we went with as the Safe and Supportive Schools under that, but Strategy Seven, we knew after reading every action in this plan that those two overarching areas would carry us through the plan, that there really wasn't anything in this plan that wouldn't come back to one of those two areas. And so, that was very intentional in our first year because as we moved forward, it feels a little overwhelming when you look at what we've outlined for next year, and people are, you know, the first reaction is, "Are we not going to do this anymore? Now, we're going to do this." But this is just the next phase of this. So, it will all come back to this.
That's great.
Go ahead, Susan.
Okay. So, just, so we were looking at assessment. We were looking at, the Newburyport Education Foundation is truly recognizing them for the role that they play, along with the Business Coalition, in terms of experiential learning. You have seen in an earlier presentation, the technology plan, that we have moved forward. And again, I would bring you back to where we started with that three years ago. We had the infusion of technology across the district. We now have a plan for a one-to-one initiative, a variety of other things that are in that technology plan. And then again, keeping a focus on students gaining real-world experience through community and civic involvement. And what you see here in terms of the bulleted, these are the things that have occurred that have, have led us to make some progress in the areas that we have presented to you. So, if you look at the expanding capacity for STEM education, obviously, that has been a partnership with NEF, obviously with the in-district funding that we've had for that. And here are, here are the things that have happened. We have established the STEM lab. You know, we have increased the FTEs of our two elementary STEM teachers in next year's budget. We have a three-phase comprehensive proposal for the district. You know, we have a high school STEM professional learning community, which in the next year, you're going to hear a lot more about for the work that we want to do at the high school. We are in the process of purchasing a lot of new science instructional materials, and I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about...
Yes, we've, you know, we've purchased, as you know, we made the middle school purchases last year. This year, we have made purchases for grades three through five, and next year, we'll be focusing on the pilot, K to two. And so, it was our goal to be able to complete K through eight science resources at the same time we start to look at the high school. So, you see, this PLC has started to get underway, but by the end of next year, we will be focusing heavily on how we're moving this all into the high schools, so...
How will you communicate that to...
The high school, the new, the new professional learning community about all the STEM progress you've made already so that it spirals?
We have been working with them right along.
Okay.
So, this PLC that formed this year has even attended some of the, some of the members have attended the elementary work that we're doing.
That's a good answer.
They've been informed of the progress as we're going along. As a matter of fact, Liz and I have been working closely with them on their phase of this three-phase proposal. It does all scaffold as we move along. Yes, and then we also have developed a district STEM curriculum group, which is new. So, that's the first time we have...
And that includes the high school?
That does. That includes everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, it does. And we're pretty excited about beginning to create structures for integrating STEM. So, we're already talking about a multidisciplinary course at the high school. We're talking about structures at the middle school where we're going to be integrating. And we, as we've been able to expand the FTE of our STEM teacher at Mullen School, we're talking about the integrated ways that she is going to work. we're talking about the integrated ways that she is going to work with the classroom teachers around science and maker work with classrooms and integrating it. So that's really exciting because one of the things, one of our focuses as we move into really creating more of a robust STEM education in the district, it's not for kids to go someplace and receive STEM. This is really about having it become an integrated part of the way that we learn.
Let's just jump right into our assessment practices and talk a little bit about that. Some of these you've already, you've had some presentations on. But this is an area that we would like to focus on next year and continue our work in the assessment area. We feel like we need to delve a little bit more deeply into quantifying what our assessment processes are and a conversation that we had with Cheryl and to a point that Mr. Hockeiser has made earlier. This is also information that needs to be communicated out to parents as to why we're doing the things that we're doing. And the accountable talk was new this year. You want to talk a little bit about that?
This is something that Tim Mahan, our new assistant principal at the NOC, has had considerable experience with. And I know that Tar Rossi has also focused on this at the Mullen School and really helping the students understand what that means to use accountable talk in a classroom with peers. And so these are a variety of assessment methods, some of them formative, some of them informal, some of them very formal, some of them standardized. But really what we've been doing this year is taking a look at what our current assessment practices are, identifying where we have strengths, where we have weaknesses, and looking at doing continued work in that area. This is one that I feel like we got started this year a lot. There weren't a lot of PLCs that focused on just assessment this year, but assessment was a part of the work that some of the professional learning communities were doing because it isn't separate.
That makes sense.
From other instructional areas.
But I do think it's important to, so that we could, so that, I would like to see us produce a document that lists what are the assessment practices in each building and the rationale for why we're doing them. Because I think that would be really important for, I think, first of all, for teachers to have a voice, to be able to present to parents here is why we do this, this particular assessment practice. But to be able to put that together in some type of a document and have that, be able to get that out to people.
When you say assessment practice, you mean like standardized, like big picture assessment, or are you talking about like why we grade homework?
I think, I think a little bit of everything. I think you want to have as much in that as you, as you could get in there. And I think that the more, the more information that we can, the more we can quantify what's happening at the classroom level and then communicate that out to parents and put it together for each building and then have a district perspective. I think that's the direction that we're headed in and that's what we want to be able to do.
We want to expand our assessment practices. You know, as we're moving towards more project-based learning, you certainly want to have more interactive assessments rather than as much paper and pencils. So, you know, that is all evolving and it will evolve simultaneously.
Kind of something we talked about during the, when we were putting this action plan together was the use of more formative, standards-based assessments as opposed to summative grading.
Right.
And so if there's a movement in that direction, I'm 100% on board.
I think there is, and you know, David, I also think that's something we don't talk enough about because there's a lot of formative assessment that's happening all the time in our classrooms. But because we're not necessarily looking at the data around those formative assessments all the time, we're not making that public. So I think it's really important that we are identifying what those formative assessments are, the purpose for them. You know, I was in a classroom the other day where the teacher was a master at formative assessment throughout the lesson, you know? Really getting, just taking the temperature of how the kids were coming along, how they were understanding, where that person needed to spend more time. And I think we do need to talk more about what those practices are in the classroom because they're key to the planning for tomorrow or to the success of a lesson today.
And as we've spoken before, maybe how the big assessments are being used formatively. Like I know we talked last year when MCAS results came home, we talked about maybe we could include some sort of a letter like this is what this means to us, this is what this means to your classroom and your child kind of thing.
Absolutely.
People had a sense of what we were doing with that data. That'd be great. Thank you.
Again, taking a look, and I'm just going to, so stop. In terms of looking at global education, developing global citizens, obviously that is a theme that came through our strategic plan in terms of, related to our mission. You know, we have, we have the added world language teacher, as we know, at the middle school. We still need to do a lot of work in that area. We have a lot of interest at the high school level in really investigating a global citizenship certification program. We have a teacher who's very interested in doing that. She has piqued my interest in that area and I, Angela and I have spoken about that.
Can you explain that a little bit better?
I don't, I don't know very much about it yet because she's just, she's just spoken to me.
There's a PLC who has worked on this, researching with other districts that do have a global citizenship.
What's the definition of global citizenship?
The state released, the state came up with something last year, I remember we talked about it, that they were going to allow, or at least thinking to allow, schools to sanction kids as, since this was a Massachusetts thing, right, that we're talking about trying to earn? It's not something we're making up.
Right.
No, 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 no. And you know, Bruce, I don't know that I can give you the full definition of that, but I'll get that to you for sure. And it's just like, you know how we've talked about a STEM certification program where students earn so many credits around this focus of study over time to where they would earn the certificate by the end of their high school education?
And I think for students who want to go into and continue study in a particular field, to have that type of a certification, to be able to present that when they're applying to schools is also going to go, you know, it's going to be one, one more kind of feather in their cap as they're, as they're applying. And, you know, we all know that it's getting more and more competitive at the college level. So whatever we can do to be able to give our students a leg up, and this, I just think is, it's, it's a very interesting opportunity. So we want to explore this and we'll be coming back to you with more information about that.
Are we, are we doing a STEM certification program in high school?
Not yet, but we're working towards it.
Although these certifications are possibilities for the future in terms of offering our students yet another way to put, as you say, a feather in their cap.
Right.
Yes.
One of the things we're looking at with the STEM certification, it may be applicable to the global citizenship certification too, is that students can actually earn credits all the way through their educational experience in Newburyport. So as they, you know, are studying things along the way in their elementary education or in their middle school education, they can be learning, earning points towards there.
That's interesting. I'd like to hear more about that, how you do that in elementary. So let's put that on an agenda when we.
You know, and we just put down, you know, additional travel opportunities for our students, obviously if we're looking at global citizenship.
Cuba may be closed again.
I know, I know.
So it's a good thing our students got there.
Yeah. Again, we talked about the, the long-range technology plan and we have a plan for a one-to-one initiative at the middle school. We have, we have a few things that we have to get done to see when we, if we're going to be able to implement it immediately in September or if we're going to have to wait until January. And I think the jury's still out on that. We have a few, a few things we still have to, have to work on. But the, the plan for that is that no later than January will we be rolling out the.
For grade six?
For grade six. The one-to-one process for our grade six students.
And then we will continue to add every year.
And the other thing that we're.
Can I ask a quick question? In the same way, when we talked about the global, adding the global languages, that if we start with the lower grades, we're going to be guaranteed to miss kids. Whereas if we start with the upper grades and add backwards, every kid coming up gets into it. So if we gave the eighth graders one-to-one, every kid when they'd be, and then the next year went to seventh and eighth, every kid coming up would get access to one-to-one. If we start with sixth, we're guaranteed that the seventh and eighth grade don't get it.
Yeah.
So is there a reason why we're starting? It's the same thing we talked about foreign language.
Yeah. I think one of the reasons we chose sixth, David, was that the, we really wanted to start the one-to-one initiative from a curriculum foundation, not from putting the device in kids' hands and then figuring out how we, how we're going to use it in the curriculum. And our sixth grade teachers and curriculum were the most ready to move in this direction. And so.
The best part.
That's where we looked at it from that perspective. One of the things we discussed at length among the committee was that we didn't want to make the mistake of bringing the technology in before we were ready to integrate it into the curriculum, that that was the most important piece to us, that it's a tool, you know, it's not a standalone. And so I think that's really how we started with the sixth grade, is we started looking at what could be done there. Not saying that other teachers are not ready, not saying that every student wouldn't benefit. It's just saying that it seemed to be the best match there. And we thought we would then be able to build right through the middle school. So, I mean, there's, our kids, our students won't have a one-to-one opportunity, but by being able to go one-to-one in one grade level, that significantly boosts the technology that we're going to make available to seventh and eighth grade and our Mullen students. Because we have a lot of carts of technology now, you know, we have lots of, I shouldn't say a lot, but we have many Chromebook carts. Those are going to come out of the sharing world once sixth grade have their own in their hands and be distributed out throughout the building. So we're increasing our availability of technology for all of the middle school, no matter what grade we start at, and the Mullen by doing this.
It's still, just take it the right way, but it still sounds like we're planning things based on teachers and curriculum, not students.
Well, I think when it comes to technology integration, we are basing it on curriculum because that's where we want it, we want that.
But we should base it on students.
Well, it is based on student learning rather than just putting a device in students' hands. So I just think it's two different ways of looking at it.
Hey, but my way starts with students.
Well, so does ours. I mean, ours is about.
Curriculum and teachers, you said, we're going to move because the teachers and the curriculum are most ready.
I think that you're trusting what I'm saying.
Well, I don't think it's about sweeping, so can we just move on? It makes sense.
I think, let me, let me clarify, David. Anytime that I would say curriculum and teachers being ready is so that we can offer an optimal learning experience for our students, not making the decision based on what the teachers need or want, or what the curriculum needs or wants are, but where we can integrate it into the curriculum for our students so that they can have the most benefit from that. That's what I'm trying to say.
I understand what you mean.
Okay.
I'm just trying to reiterate the fact that we have two years of kids we're talking about skipping. That's all. And those kids are, I, I'm going to say the eighth graders going into the high school are the most pressed to learn how to integrate the technology.
But you're building a program at the high school as well. So it's not, I don't think it's an end-all opportunity for these students. They've still got, you know, four years.
There will be gaps, no matter how, whenever you start to integrate something new and you start at one point, there's always some gaps. And the gaps that David is saying are legitimate. I mean, that, you know, it's true. It's, but no matter where you integrate, you're going to, there will be gaps until you're fully integrated. And this will happen over a three-year period. And so there will be a period of time where not everybody will have the benefit of it.
Are kids going to be allowed, like a bring-your-own-device piece in other grades?
The high school. The high school is, is a bring-your-own-device environment. At the middle school, some of our kids are using other devices at certain times for certain assignments already. So that may be, you know, we're, we're trying to create a minimal standard that we want every student to be able to experience by going with a one-to-one.
We're also investigating, looking at some other, other ways in which we may or may not move at this point. For example, and that was part of, of what's in the technology plan too, and looking at, at any point, do we want to offer a purchase plan that we could, we could provide for parents to purchase a device, you know, working through the school? There's a whole list of other things that we're looking at. If you look at that sort of three-page summary document or two-page summary document for the technology plan that I had, had presented to people, you'll see that some of those ideas are in there too. So we are, we're trying to look at this multifaceted because you're right. I mean, honestly, we want to, we want to be maximizing the technology that we have and we want to be making good decisions around every student. Couple of other, the Massachusetts Tiered Support System, which gets at both academic, social, emotional, our core and our intervention. That's another area that we're, we're looking at and I'm going to hold off talking about the work that we're going to do next year. But there's a big piece of this that we're exploring for next year that I will get to in just a little bit. We've added Facing History this year at our middle school and we've had back from that have been very, very positive. It's a great, it's an amazing program.
And what's really nice about our Facing History is many of the people who work for Facing History have also worked with the, through the program of adolescent literacy that we're working with. So we've really seen a nice literacy, kind of a humanities approach to this, a real crossover between that. And then you can see some of the other content areas that we have been working on as a way to expand our instructional approaches. There's a lot of information that's come out of the work of our professional learning communities and different, different PLCs took different focus areas in this, but, you know, it's encompassed many, many things. So, you know, people have been looking for ways to integrate technology better, looking for ways to take a multidisciplinary approach to learning, looking for ways to integrate habits of mind into their instructional practice. Different PLCs have gone to visit other districts to see how they're doing things, to see and to consult with other districts, to see if there's elements of programs that they've been using. Our schools have been examining their schedules to see, are we using our time the best way that we can? Is there a different way to think about how we're using our time in a school day to maximize our instruction? So a lot of talk around providing opportunities for students to pursue their personal interests through independent projects at our earlier grades and the senior project is still being discussed. And it was funny, the PLC that was working on some of this.
How many years is this?
I know. I think they were taking another avenue and as I looked at their final reflection, they came right back to the original recommendation. So it came full circle, so we have our fingers crossed.
Just in terms of some of the experiential learning, I just want to make a tie-in for you and make you aware that, that, you know, we talked about when Breznerham was being built and the, the community center, senior community center was being built, that we hoped that we were going to be able to provide some partnerships there. And I can tell you that we have some partnerships there. We have, some of our second graders have actually planted in our growing vegetables that are there and some of it will be used at the senior center and some of it will be. And some of it will be used at the senior center, and some of it will be tied in, working with the, nourishing the North Shore. We also had a, we have students who have planted pumpkins outside of Breznerhan as well. So, we're trying, and there's a number of things that we are doing to, to help students realize, even from a very early age, their role in giving back to the community, their role in being able to help other people, their role in partnering with some of the folks at the senior center as well. So we've been able to really start to capitalize on having those resources in our community. We also have had a recent connection with people from the Tree Commission, and that's been great. With their, the next time that you drive by Knock Mullen, please note that there are four new trees planted outside of Knock Mullen. And they're going to continue to work with us, and we now have a curricular connection to them. So if you want to share your story.
Oh, yeah, it's been fun. We've been talking about some of the curricular, curricular connections that we might be able to make to the work that the Tree Commission is doing. And we had a meeting last week at John Alwell's farm. And we talked about maybe starting, in collaboration with John's farm, starting a tree nursery that the students would be involved in and then the, be responsible for taking those trees when they were ready and planting them in the community. And, and, but in that, they, we've had great conversations about learning, about soil composition, and understanding what is needed for the growth of the variety of species that we'd use. And hopefully be able to determine some of those species based on other elements of curriculum. For example, you know, one of the, one of the trees the Commission wanted to plant on the Knock Ground was the tree that Anne Frank looked out the window to see. So, easy curriculum connections like that, that we can make. So, but we, we really talked about sustainability, we've talked about, you know, understanding how a tree farm works, because John's farm is a tree farm. And so I think there's a lot of possibilities. We're just beginning to delve in to what we might be able to do there, but it's kind of fun.
And it's, it's all really unfolded in like the last month.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, I want to say that the PTO on Facebook has sent some great pictures, both of the garden, the kids working in the garden, the dune restoration and the trees. So, that's all positive PR that is nice to, to see, you know, the kids' involvement.
Right, right, right. And, you know, the dune restoration is all in partnership with, with UNH and the work that they are doing there. So, the partner, we keep trying to expand our partnerships with higher ed in as many ways as we can.
But it's all outside the classroom, was my point as well, you know, when we talked about that, moving beyond the walls.
It's true. Just on Strategy Seven, providing support so all students are ready and able to learn. Obviously, safe and supportive school environment, you know, we've been able to add the security, obviously, here at the high school this year. We want students to come to school every day mentally, socially, and emotionally ready to learn. Obviously, we've, we've had a lot of talk around student stress at all levels. You know, I've talked with you about the number of students that are anxious that are coming to schools. And we're seeing a real increase in that, where it's not unique to New Report, but it is, I think, a sign of where our society is right now. And there are just, there are many, many things that we have worked on this year. For example, you just look on the back, your brochure's the Clipper Values that are there. Schools have, the schools have done a variety of different things for the integration of the Clipper Values. Mullen, for example, took each one of the values, and they, they held a school-wide assembly on it and taught kids what a particular value, what it would look like as an action, and talked about that, and then had some follow-up with that. So that's one of the things that Mullen has done. Breznerhan also focused on the values and on instilling the values in the kids. And this is work that will continue, this does not, this does not stop. This is something that you want to become part of your culture, and that you have to keep reminding kids. I have this week, I've, or last weekend, this week, because I had a candidate today, for any new staff that we're hiring, regardless of what their role is, whether they're a teacher, cafeteria worker, custodian. One of the things that I am talking with them about are the Clipper Values. And that my expectation is that anyone within the New Report Public Schools will work to not only uphold these values, but to help instill it in the boys and girls. And that's the talk that we have to, you know, that we want to have. We want that to be part of our culture. You want, you know, i- if a teacher is having a teachable moment, and they are redirecting a student, you know, and they're talking about, I think you might have, you know, you could have been kinder in that interaction, I wonder what you could do next time, that would show a little bit more kindness. And I think that we want to start using the words that are in our Clipper Values. And we want that to be happening in every school, so.
We had a, a teacher who just shared with me at the high school, wellness teacher, that they are weaving the Clipper Values into the objectives that get posted on the board before class. So how the values play into the objective for the lesson of the day, which I thought was a great way to integrate them also into your everyday work.
I don't, I don't want to belabor, just, just a couple of other things that I do want to just bring, that I do want to bring to your attention. So, we had a PLC, yeah, would you like to know what that means?
S-Bert.
Okay. S-Bert stands for Short Brief Intervention-
Recovery?
Referral to Treatment. It's a screener.
Oh, wow.
It's a screener, and it's, and then BERT is the Bridge for Resilience in Transition. And those are students who may have been out for hospitalization. And it's a way for us to provide support for them as a process that we follow as they come back and enter back into the district. The Short Brief Intervention Referral to Treatment Screener is really, it's, it's, our staff are taught these, what they call motivational interviewing techniques. And it's a series of questions that they're asking kids, and they're identifying students who may need to be referred for short periods of treatment. Could be for anxiety, could be for depression, could be for a whole host of things. But it's our, our guidance counselors, our nurses who are receiving-
So it's not academics?
No, it's the social, emotional case, yes. And I want, I want to just take a minute and talk about the DOT program at the middle school. So they identified the fact that there were some students at the middle school who really were loners, and who they felt like they didn't necessarily have a connection. So they took every child at the middle school, and they had the teachers kind of do what I would call a gallery walk, where they identified students that they felt they had a relationship with, and this was for the staff within the building. So any students that didn't have a lot of dots were the students that they targeted. So that they came up with a plan for each of those kids, for who was going to interact with that child, to make sure that students had some point people to go to. So really down to the individual student level, that's one of the things that they're doing. And again, you can't separate the, you know, in order to make sure that students are ready to learn, you know, they have to be ready to learn in all areas, so they have to feel safe and secure. And they have to feel like they're supported. Again, some of the, some of the things that you see there, I mean, I think all the schools are working on community building. They are all identifying areas of stress for students. The middle school in particular is looking at the cafeteria. And the cafeteria may be surprising to people, but that can cause a lot of anxiety for our students. And so we're looking at ways in which we can reduce the anxiety for our middle school students. And it's, it's a whole host of things we're looking at. We're looking at, can we sort of redesign the way the cafeteria is? Can we put in some different kinds of seating? Can we create some different things to have happen there? They have a proposal that's come forward where they're trying to bring some music in once a month to see how music would impact students during lunchtime. So there's a whole host of things that they're looking at, and that came out of a specific PLC who was looking at ways to improve the overall experience for students, particularly at lunch.
And this became a focus area because after surveying the students, they found that that was one of the most stressful times of many kids' day, was the cafeteria. So then they started to focus on that.
So we dovetail that into the amount of time for lunch? Not just the physical-
Yeah.
Experience, but the amount of time given? And I've heard two things, number one is there's always the call for just more downtime, recess, go-to-go during the day. But also that the lines are long enough that by the time the kids, if they're buying lunch, sometimes they will get to their seat as they're being told they have to start getting ready to clean up.
You got a lunch, the lines haven't been, I mean, that, that I've actually paid some attention to this year because that was a, that was a complaint I heard last year. I think that we have made some improvement there, so, but there are kids, if you're at the, if you're at the back, and you're one of, if you're a doddler, and it takes you a little while to get to the cafeteria, you might be at the back of the line, so you are going to have less time. So that's accurate.
Do the Mullen kids go to the, and like, I guess at what age do the kids go to the cafeteria on their own? Is it, like, I'm assuming the Breznerhan kids get brought to the cafeteria?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Do the Mullen kids also get brought to the cafeteria?
They get, yeah.
They get brought. We have a Mullen teacher right here, who's saying, "Yes, they get brought." Thanks, Lee.
So it's, David, just like middle school, not to have doddlers, but younger kids just sometimes can't get it together to buy, they're just standing there staring at the-
Something that-
Experience is overwhelming sometimes.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a lot.
One of the things that's on here, it's, it's sort of, it's been on my radar screen for a couple of years now, and we really, we haven't, we haven't done anything about it. And that is really taking a deep dive into homework practices and what we're doing for homework practices. And that's something that we need to do. And that has come up, we did, we did take one leadership team meeting in which we, we took a look at where we wanted to go with that. So, I think that we're going to be putting together a, a group that will eventually move across the district, because we would like to be able to make some recommendations to policy.
Section eight.
Yeah, section eight, that's correct, we haven't gotten there yet. And then the last, the last thing that I'll, I'll talk about in this document is, again, the Alice training, which is the, training, it's, it's basically for, if there's an active shooter in your building. So we had, there was a group at the high school who was quite interested in this. And now we've, most of our administrators have gone through a lot of-
We have trained administrators in every building.
And the group at the high school really wanted to take a look at this. And they did some, some research into this. And Alice offers an online training program for staff. And we have, and they had such a good experience with it at the high school level, that we have decided to adopt that district-wide for next year. So we'll be training all of our staff. And that means not just our teaching staff, but our instructional assistants, our custodians. We have some challenges in trying to figure out how we'll do that with, with some of our folks. But we're, that's one of the things that we will be coming up with a planning document on that, for how, how we'll go about doing that. It's something that the, we worked in conjunction with the police on this as well, and they are very supportive of, of us moving in that direction. And again, once we do that, it will come back to policy, because we'll have, we'll-
It's a never-ending committee.
Make some changes. Angela, anything else you want to add?
No, the only thing I would add to that is, I think one of the, one of the nice bridges that emerged kind of naturally in some of the work this year is as we start looking at our tier systems of support for students, the whole process of, you know, that we know as RTI, where we're really looking at how we respond to needed interventions for students, has come together with some of the research that has been done around positive classroom behavior supports. And so now, rather than saying RTI or talking about PBIS, we're really talking about the overarching tiered system of support, and how it has two arms. And one is focuses on social, emotional, emotional interventions. And the other one may focus on academic interventions. But they're all one umbrella, really helping us see all of the needs of our child, that whole child approach. So, that was really nice to see that evolve into that type of thinking, because they've really kind of been parallel paths, and now we're really looking at them as one.
That's really great to hear, that's why I asked a question before about the, you know, the MSTT. I mean, I think somehow it's got to all be, you know, it's the child and the whole child, so this, that's really nice to hear.
There is no magic to the next page.
I was going to say, can you just explain this briefly?
Yes, I can. So, so one of, if you notice in your documents, it's 2016 to 2021. So-
I get that.
It's a five-year period. So, one of the things that we, that we had to do, and I say we, it was Angela and Lisa as internal facilitators and myself, we sat and we took a look at, for this year, knowing that we had had a request to kind of dial things back, to focus and to allow teachers to have some choice in their learning. We looked at the things that we were, that we could link in the strategic plan. So that's why the, the plans that you see for this year, it doesn't mean the work absolutely stops on those things, because some of it we've just begun, and it is going to continue. But you do have to kind of divide, divide them up. And you have to decide which ones you're going to focus on, and to what degree each of the years. So, if you were to look in your big, your big document here, and you could look at for, for 2017, 18, and I have spelled them out for you on the next page.
What kind?
So, just a couple of observations I want to make, this would be our focus for next year. Obviously, there is planning, so assessment, we're still focusing on assessment, I talked about that already. Support relationships and learning communities among teachers and administrators. Students, again, mentally, socially, emotionally ready to learn, that one's not ever going away. You know, that one's, that one, you continue to see that. Community support for the achievement of students' personal goals. We are working, we've been working hard with the NEF and with the NEF BC to look at how the BC can really support us. And we've come up with, we've been doing some brainstorming, and we've come up with some, I think, some pretty good, some pretty good ideas. And I think we have some, I think we're headed in a good direction there. Again, one of the things that we want to focus on next year in terms of the communication, stakeholders are informed about the district-wide, school-level events, programs, and opportunities. Then, how do we, how does leadership give voice to all constituencies to ensure engagement? So that's one more way to be able to, how do we do that? How do we make sure that we're getting out there? Again, the implementation of a cohesive vertically-aligned response to intervention at all grade levels, so keeping a focus on that. And then students have the tools necessary to appropriately and safely utilize technology. For example, one of the things that we need to do that is part of the technology plan is that we need to ensure that the filter, that if students are going to be bringing a device home that we give them, that the filtering device that's on that is one in which the filtering level is appropriate. So that they, so that's one of the things that, that we have to work on. But just one other thing that I would point out, and that I would, I would say to the school committee, I think that there are a number of areas within the, the focus areas for 17, 18, where the school committee can play, I think, an important role in terms of your goals. Communication being one, for sure. The work with the NEF, there are a number of linkages here. So, I just would ask that, that's one of the things in preparation for our retreat, I would ask you to be really looking at this, and to be identifying and thinking about what you would like to be focusing on. I think there are some definite connections that can be made.
And this, I think, is, is, this page is pretty much what I was talking about. If the, the CIE committee took on the strategic plan, these would be the kind of things that we would, we would help- these would be the kind of things that we would help with. You know, communication and, you know, different things like that. Not so much the curriculum of it, but how do we get it out there and support each other? And what are the things that we as a school committee can do? Because we've all asked each other, what part do we play in the strategic plan? So I think this page gives us a good indication anyway of opportunities.
Angela, can you talk a little bit about the tie-in to our professional development day without giving too much away?
Our professional development day on Thursday is a makeup day for the snow day that we had during the school year. And so, you know, that's a hard day to do professional development. The students are leaving on Wednesday. And then we're having this on Thursday. So we're starting with something really interactive that was designed from some feedback that each of the PLCs gave us about their work this year and some of their accomplishments, things they're proud of. So we're, I'm not going to say more than that, but that should be fun and it'll be interactive. And it should help keep people with us and engaged. And then we're going to give teachers an opportunity to work in vertical PLCs for a little while. So say you were part of a PLC that focused on growth mindset, you'd have the opportunity to work with people from all of the other buildings in the district that also worked with growth mindset. And they've got some guiding questions to help lead discussions and to help them, in their reflection, come back to the mission. That's a part of the strategic plan, the bigger picture of the strategic plan. And what impact did the work you did this year have on helping us realize these larger goals that are part of our strategic plan? And then in the afternoon, we have Michael Eitman joining us. And he is going to do some work around a puzzle of learning, which is a very reflective practice. It too should be engaging. It's very interactive. And so I'm hoping for a really good day. Yeah, and it's, we're really going to be spending some time in reflective practice on the things we did this year, you know, how that's helped us grow professionally and how it's helped us work towards the goals of the district.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Last day of school.
Next to last.
Next to last.
Well, still.
Yeah, it's hard. Next to last.
Thank you for that. I think that really helps give us extra information that we've been looking for. And a lot of work has obviously been done. Next thing, oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
It's really quick. I just have had a couple of people that were on the committees ask me where we were. And so is there a way that everyone who was on a committee can get a copy of this?
That's a good idea.
That's a very good idea.
That is a good idea. Next, is there anything else about the strategic plan before we move on? Sorry, I jumped the gun. Next up on our agenda is the superintendent's evaluation. And I'm going to be brief here. And Mr. Decanter is going to share with us the collating that he did. It was our intent for this meeting to take a look at the three SMART goals and the four professional indicators from the state and to do the rankings that are due to the state by next month, the beginning of next month. We expect further communication and conversation at our retreat about some of the results. And more so, we're going to talk about the indicators tonight and then do more of the comments of strengths and growth areas at our retreat so we can delve into them. As you know, Susan has requested and suggested that we focus our goals and our work for next year. And I think she's laid the path to that this evening with Angela talking about the strategic plan. So I'm kind of excited about that. So I'm going to turn this over to Nick again. Nick's been busy.
You didn't give me, you didn't give me the, oh. So a couple of things about the superintendent's evaluation that I think, I would invite you, if you haven't done that, to still think about going back, writing your comments if you don't have them, and adding them in because they will be helpful for us when we go back to the meeting. All of you did focus, as you were asked to, primarily on getting the scores in, which I think overall reflect a very, a very good and interesting year for the superintendent. The three SMART goals, the scores on them, I think, all indicate the fact that they are work in progress because these were really goals that were put together for two years. And the SMART goal number one, which is social and emotional learning, has some progress to people and significant progress for people. So I think it sort of shows the dynamics of the situation. If we move on to SMART goal number two, which is the support of economically disadvantaged.
Okay, tell me about that.
Slightly less. And I think that probably comes from the fact that we haven't had the opportunity to discuss what the superintendent has been doing in this area. But we do see that this is very much, at least from what the school committee perceived, it's very much in its infancy. We have, one did not meet at all. Three some progresses and only two people scored with significant progress there. So I would take that as an invitation to the superintendent to say, hey, blow your own horn on this one and see what you can give us so that we can be more, more educated in our comments with you next week or at the retreat. The third SMART goal is in strategic planning. And given the presentation that we just saw, I think we, they're very definitely felt that there had been a fair amount of progress. We have five out of the six rating people to, saying that we made some progress or significant progress in that area. So that's some good area. We did have one did not meet. And I'm sure that person will talk to their decision when we have the retreat. Moving on to the four standards. Standard number one is instructional leadership. Largely here, I think, if I could take away an overall comment on the superintendent's evaluation overall, is she's exactly where we think she should be proficient. There are some areas that we had, areas of excellence last year that aren't appealing this year. But I think we also had a lot more going on this year. So in instructional leadership, we had five people rate her as proficient. In management of operations, five people rating her as proficient. The family and community, only four rated her as proficient to as needs improvement. And I should say that the needs improvement, almost across the board when I take a look at the comments, for the most part are communication-related. Getting us the information we need when we need it and understand about what we're doing. So I'd say.
We'll talk more about that specifically.
We will talk more about that specifically. At the, I think the, to use a phrase, the data supports that. And finally, in the area of professional culture, we all rated the superintendent proficient. I will say that going through these and reading the comments is always interesting to me. I think in general, there is a, we know that there's more going on there, but we're not seeing it all or we're not knowing about it all so that we can refer to it. So we need to look at that. We need to look at how we present, how the superintendent presents her achievements to us so that we can educate our evaluation a little more. From a process point of view, I think there are things we can do. I think that interestingly, our grades for the superintendent, if you can call them grades, were higher where she provided more information about what she's been doing than those where she didn't. So that is interesting, I think. Going back and forth, the process of getting this done this year seemed to be a little painful for a lot of people. We did have one person turn them in on time. Thank you. And, but it was, it was a little bit of a battle. And even though we were working off of Word documents, people were still having trouble with formats or finding the formats. And half jokingly, I said to Mr. Hochheiser, one of the communications we had back and forth about this, I said, you know, next year, I think I'm going to put this on Survey Monkey. And the more I thought of it, I thought, this is probably not a bad idea.
Well, we'll be talking about the process of evaluation because you're absolutely right that the committee had somewhat of a struggle because of the way we're, the school committee and the superintendent are both responsible for providing evidence. So we really need to, I think, hone in on that in this process so that it should not be this cumbersome for us at this point. So we all need to take some responsibility as to how we fix that. Because I think Mr. Decanter is right. If you notice, you know, the goals and areas that we were provided with information, like, you know, the professional culture, everyone scored the same way. And I do believe that's because of all the information we've received over time. And it was sort of easy to say, you know, this part's great. This is, and the other thing that Mr. Decanter mentioned, which I think is true too, is recall, please, that the superintendent's SMART goals were two-year goals. So these are process pieces of those goals. And I think what we're saying, superintendent, is we didn't get enough ongoing information. So do you have comments or?
I have not read this entire document yet, so.
No, I didn't think you had. But I just, I think we're all coming from the same point of view of how do we gather evidence?
You know, as I said at the beginning of this year, that it's really in the feedback and in the comments where that's the most valuable.
Absolutely. And that, we do have some authority there. Those of you who are still, would like to add comments or pending your comments, please do so in bullet points. It makes it much easier to compile.
That's what I always do. The bullets.
And we'll make sure that we'll have a better picture for the superintendent at our retreat. But I think we have what we need for the state now.
The state, we do.
We do.
And the comments, we're looking forward to a long, productive discussion with you at our retreat.
Conversation. Thank you very much. Subcommittee reports, joint ed does not meet. We know finance didn't meet. We know policy met ad infinitum. Curriculum, instruction, and expectations met.
Sure, yeah, we met this afternoon. We had a very animated conversation to clarify where we stand on late start. I think we all arrived at the same place, which is.
Do you want to, yes?
Sure, yeah. Which is that we made a recommendation that the process begin to move our classes a half an hour later and end classes a half an hour later. And that process involves the setting up of committees at each of the schools. The purpose of those committees is to take a look at the challenges their school faces and to try to come up with resolutions and solutions for that. We also are expecting them to report out October 16. And we will in December then take a final vote. So that is, that's sort of the basic core. There are other things that need to happen. One is that the athletic director needs to begin his conversations about trying to reschedule some of the athletic events. That is an issue. So I guess the point that we wanted to make was that the way that the, the way that the motion read, it seemed like we were absolutely moving ahead. And it didn't, it didn't capture those benchmarks that we've got. And then we talked about adopting the teacher plan as in this committee.
Agreed. Any other committee? Superintendent's evaluation?
We did.
Yes, Mr. Decanter.
I would just like to thank all school committee members for making every effort to make it to the NEF awards night. It was definitely appreciated that we were there. I had several board members come up to me and say how nice it was that we were all present. So I thank you for making the effort to be in there.
Let's go to attendance.
I would just like to point out in your notes too, there are a lot of important dates coming up. The grade eight, Wednesday at 8:00. Which you're all invited to.
Is it at 8?
It's at 8:30.
It's 8:30 or 4:00 or 9:00.
That's probably a typo.
I'd say 4:50.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I will clarify that and send that out to people.
It's Wednesday morning?
Wednesday morning.
Do you ever do that at night?
They have never done it at night, to my knowledge.
Come on in.
8:45.
It starts at 8:45.
Is there any way we could, can we think about doing that at night?
Not this year.
Just in the future, again, I'm thinking about the working groups. I'll tell you, at home, like, half my teachers missed the last day of school today because people are having middle school graduations in the middle of the day. And if you work, we're talking about 180 families taking the day off of work.
We can talk about it.
It's certainly a crowded venue. There's standing room only. It's incredible.
It's amazing. It's amazing.
It's incredible.
So obviously, people can make it.
Right.
People will find a way to make it there for their child's graduation. Yes.
The Mullen awards are Wednesday afternoon. And you're all invited to that. And just, there's information on there about the school committee summer retreat. We're going to be at the senior community center. And then we have, our next school committee meeting will be August 7. Unless there's a reason to have it.
Is there a copy for me or is that your copy?
This is mine.
Do I have a copy? There should be. I should have had enough. No, this is the one you gave me in your office.
No, you take this. I promise I'm not going to read this tonight. You take this. And at some point, I'll get another one.
No, but I'll be here tomorrow. Moving on, I'll come.
We'll get you one. I have plenty.
Take my contract, please.
I think you took, I think you might have taken one.
Oh, no, my name on it.
I know, I counted correctly.
That's why I was suspicious. No moves, next discussion. Can I just say thanks for a great school year, everybody? I think we've worked hard as a committee. I know we've got work to do, but we're on the way. All those in favor? No?